Thank you. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Sorry, we're a little bit cramped in here, but we'll get through this as we can. We have employee recognition this morning. I do not see her. But we have Jenny Grisafi, who has been with the county for 30 years, and we appreciate. Yes, that's awesome. She works for our magistrate Judge Jody Cortner, and we appreciate her service, and we congratulate her, and we'll make sure that we get her certificate to her later. Thank you.
Motion to approve item one.
I will second that motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hall, approved by Commissioner Herschel, to approve the minutes of the January 22nd, 2020 meeting. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve item two.
I will second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Hall, seconded by Commissioner Herschel, to recess the Commissioners' meeting at the salary board at 9:05. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve item one.
I will second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to approve the minutes of the January 22nd salary board meeting, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to approve item two.
I will second that motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hall to create an additional part-time telecommunicator position for a total of six positions, effective on February 13, 2020, per the recommendation of Bruce Butler, Director of Public Safety, 911 Coordinator, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. Questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Number three.
Motion to approve three.
I will second that motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hall to eliminate the position of telecommunicator and/or quality assurance officer, part-time, effective on February 13, 2020, per the recommendation of Bruce Butler, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. Questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Item number four. I approve. Motion to approve four.
I will second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to create a position of temporary assistant of elections, voter registrar, at $11.48 per hour, no benefits, effective February 12, 2020, per the recommendation of Rebecca Hubbard, Chief Clerk, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. Questions or comments? Yes, Vera, Stacy?
Thanks, Stacy.
Is it temporary, is there like a length of hours or a length of time assigned to it?
It'll be, it's temporary, but it'll be eight hours a day, probably from the last week of March through the first week of May.
And then is this a full-time position?
No, it's a temporary. Well, he just said eight hours a day, but it's just going to be for a small.
Full-time temporary position.
So Monday through Friday?
Yes.
And then she might continue after that, or this is just for now?
That's just for now.
Stacy?
And is this just in anticipation of needs with the prevailing ballots and things like that?
That's correct. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number five?
Motion to approve five.
I will second that motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hall to create a full-time, non-union position of IT system administrator, 40 hours per week, 1923 per hour, effective January 12, with a six-month probationary period and benefits, per the county policy manual, per the recommendation of Stephen Janowski. Questions or comments?
Now, IT stands for what?
Technology, it's our IT department. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number six?
Motion to approve six.
I will second that motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hall to ratify and approve the collective bargaining agreement between Susquehanna County and the Teamsters Local 229, covering its professional employees and the Office of Children and Youth Services, effective January 1 through December 31, 2024, per the recommendation of the Commissioners. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any public comment?
Just want to make a statement to it, didn't say it, but items two, three, and four, those are all union positions.
Thank you. Yes, Edna.
Why are these agendas saying February 12? And then February 12 again?
It is February 12.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Motion adjourned, returned to the Commissioners' room.
I will second that motion.
I got a motion from Commissioner Hall, seconded by Commissioner Herschel, returned to the Commissioners' meeting at 9:10.
Motion to approve item number three.
I will second that motion.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to approve item number four.
I will second that motion.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number five?
Motion to approve number five.
I will second that.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to ratify and approve the hiring of Eric Berg Montrose, the open part-time, union-eligible position of corrections officer, $14.96 per hour, varied hours, effective January 30, 2020, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye.
Motion to approve item six.
I will second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to ratify and accept with regret the resignation of Joseph Igoe from the position of full-time corrections officer, effective January 28, 2020, per Warden Mark Shell, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve seven.
I just don't want to, I want to prove that I'm not crazy. Page two of the Susquehanna County Commissioners says February 4, 2020. Top sheet says 12, second sheet says 20, says four.
Okay, well, thank you for the correction. Today's is 12.
Yeah, we just handed it out, that was the handout, sorry.
We have a really big agenda to get through here today. All right, number, where are we, number seven or six? Six, did we take a vote?
Yes.
Okay, aye. Number seven, please.
Motion to approve so.
I will second that motion.
Number seven, motion by Commissioner Hall to ratify and approve the transfer of Brett Vesenemi from the position of part-time corrections officer to the open, non-union position of full-time corrections sergeant, shift commander at $18 per hour, effective January 23, with a six-month probation period and benefits according to the jail bargaining unit contract and the county policy manual, per the recommendation of Warden Mark Shell. Questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve number eight.
I will second that motion.
I got a motion by Commissioner Hall to ratify and approve the termination of Matthew Toros from the position of full-time corrections officer, effective January 28, 2020, per the recommendation of Warden Shell, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve item nine.
I will second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to ratify and approve the transfer of Donald Cronk from the position of part-time corrections officer to the open, union-eligible position of full-time corrections officer, $14.95 per hour, effective January 28, per the recommendation of Warden Shell, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. Are there any questions or comments? Yes, Vera?
Are these hourly rates higher than last time, has something increased?
No, nothing's changed at this moment. All in favor? Aye. Number 10.
Motion to approve Tom.
I will second that motion.
I got a motion by Commissioner Hall to ratify and approve the hiring of Lynn Lyons, Montrose, the open, union-eligible position of part-time corrections officer, $14.96 per hour, varied hours, effective January 3, 2020, with a six-month probation period and benefits according to the jail bargaining unit contract, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. Any questions or comments? Yes, Colleen?
We were just looking, noticing that one is $14.95, one is $14.96, is there a reason why there's a penny difference in their wages?
You got an idea on that?
Yep, it's because they were hired, if they were here before the first of the year, they're at the old rate, and then they did the 2% increase.
2% increase for this year. So it depends whether they were hired last year or this year, that penny, that's the difference. Okay?
But this is for a transfer. So because he was here before he was being transferred?
He gets paid less.
One's a transfer, that's the way the contract reads right now.
And the new one was, yeah, like Stacy said, one's, it's a penny more for less service, less time in service?
It's the way the contract reads right now.
All in favor? Aye. Number 11. Did you make that up?
Motion to approve one.
I'd like to second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to ratify and approve the hiring of Jeremy Shiptowski, Susquehanna, to the open, union-eligible position of part-time corrections officer, $14.96 per hour, varied hours, effective February 3, 2020, recommendation of Warden Shell, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. Questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Number 12.
Motion to approve 12.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to ratify and approve the transfer of Cody Whitman from the position of part-time corrections officer to the open, union-eligible position of full-time corrections officer, $14.95 per hour, effective January 28, 2020, per the recommendation of Warden Shell, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. Do we have any questions or comments?
How many corrections officers do you have total for the jail?
Thirty-something, isn't it thirty-something?
I don't know.
We don't know, we have to look it up on.
On the thing, and how many people are incarcerated, would you say, approximately?
Approximately 56.
You got 30 officers for about 50 people?
Well, it's around the clock, there's three shifts.
Seven days a week.
Seven days a week, yeah.
So it's almost.
They don't have weekends off or anything.
Be nice.
Unless they really lock the doors.
Unless we really lock the doors, thank you.
If they really lock the door, we could save them.
All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve number 13.
I will second that motion.
I got a motion by Commissioner Hall to ratify the termination of Robert Hyde from the position of chief clerk and open records officer, effective January 31, 2020, per the recommendation of the Commissioners, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. Questions or comments?
You know, I read in the paper that he was given no warning before he was terminated. Is that true? That he was just approached out of the blue and told, you have to leave now, we don't need your services anymore. Is that how the business was done?
It's a personnel issue, we can't talk about that, but it was in the paper, I believe everything you read, I guess. All in favor?
Aye.
Number 14.
Motion to approve 14.
I will second that motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hall to ratify and approve the transfer of Rebecca Hibbert from the position of deputy chief clerk to the open, full-time, non-union position of chief clerk, salary of $55,000, with an increase to 60 upon successful completion of a six-month probationary period, minimum 40 hours per week with benefits per the county policy manual and government mandated requirements, effective January 31, 2020, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve 15.
I will second that motion.
I got a motion by Commissioner Hall to assign Jean Conklin as human resources director, acting deputy chief clerk, with the authority to use facsimile signatures for any or all three Commissioners by ink stamp, in lieu of personally made signatures on county checks, as well as estimation ability in lieu of the chief clerk, deputy chief clerk's signature on any county documents. Provided such authority is given and exercised under the direction of each Commissioner, effective on January 31, 2020, per the County Commissioners, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. Questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Approve 16.
I will second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to approve the hiring of Anthony Barcock Montrose to the open, union-eligible position of full-time juvenile probation officer, $17.50 per hour, effective February 14, per the recommendation of President Judge Jason Lay. All in favor?
Aye.
Questions and comments on that one?
Motion to approve 17.
I will second that motion.
I got a motion from Commissioner Hall to approve the transfer of Mary Rosenkrantz from the eliminated position of telecommunicator and/or quality assurance officer, part-time, to the position of part-time telecommunicator at a TC2 level at a rate of 1623, effective January 13, per the recommendation of Bruce Butler, Director of Public Safety, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. Questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Motion to approve 18.
I will second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to acknowledge the hiring of Melissa Groves Montrose, the open, union-eligible position of full-time second deputy pathantry clerk of courts, $12.45 per hour, effective February 10, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. Questions or comments? All in favor? Aye.
Motion to approve 19.
I will second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to accept with regret the resignation of Patrick Morazetskit from the position of full-time corrections officer, effective February 20, per Warden Shell, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. Questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Motion to approve 20.
I will second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to approve the transfer of Edward Hubcon from the position of part-time corrections officer to the open, union-eligible position of full-time corrections officer, $14.96 per hour, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. Questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Motion to approve 21.
I will second that motion.
I got a motion by Commissioner Hall to accept with regret the resignation of Jeffrey Maniac from the position of full-time 911 Systems IT technician, telecommunicator, effective February 21, 2020, per Bruce Button, Director of Public Safety, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. Questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Motion to approve 22.
I will second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to accept with regret the resignation of Amber Lee Warner from the position of establishment specialist court liaison, effective February 21, 2020, per Michelle Gerald, Director of Domestic Relations, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. Questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Motion to approve 23.
I will second that motion.
I got a motion by Commissioner Hall to advertise for public bid, a municipal bid, for the following vehicles for sale, you can read them, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. Questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Motion to approve 24.
I will second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to enter into purchase service agreement with Kids Peace National Centers for Child Welfare Services, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. Questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Motion to approve 25.
I will second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to enter into purchase service agreement of PH Child Care LLC and Middle Atlantic Youth Services out of Pittston, Pennsylvania, for child welfare services, through July 1, 2019, through June 30, 2020, per the recommendation of Michelle Graziano, Director of Children and Youth, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. Questions or comments?
I see that one starts at one time and ends at the other, the other one picks it up. Is there a reason why they're being changed out?
We just have to renew these every year, we're in this constant, we're always doing this.
But they're, they're the same.
Well, they probably run on different cycles, from different companies.
They're on fiscal years.
There you go.
Well, I'm just wondering if they're both, for childcare services, if they're both performing the same functions, I guess, maybe is the better question.
Probably not, because children have different needs. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 26.
Motion to approve 26.
I will second that motion.
I got a motion by Commissioner Hall to enter into a contract with Tower Services Unlimited for installation services of tower shelter and generator of state game lands at Elk Mountain, with Pennsylvania state contract pricing of $388,314, paid with funds from state 911 money, per the recommendation of Bruce Butler, Director of Public Safety, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. Questions or comments?
Is it totally supportive, the $388,000 from the state funds?
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve 28.
I will second that motion.
27.
27, sorry.
I will second that motion to approve number 27.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to enter into a maintenance agreement with Gaia Communication Industries, software upgrade service packs and factory support, effective January 27, 2020, through January 26, 2021, for a cost of $1,010. I got it seconded by Commissioner Herschel. Questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion to approve 28.
I will second that motion.
I got a motion by Commissioner Hall to open an award following the review of the solicitor and engineer, see a bids for Susquehanna County Recycling Center pavement replacements, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. Questions or comments? All in favor, say aye. Thank you all of you for coming today, we'll open more bids for you.
Item first one.
Lothar Construction out of Binghamton, New York.
Both are.
Both are, I'm sorry, apologize.
And item two is $13,250. Write that down there.
What was that, 220, 223, what?
223. 223, 186.50. 186.50.
Fifty, and then 13,250.
This is from MR Dur Inc. to Wanda, Pennsylvania.
Item one is $325,000. Item two is $11,500.
This is from Waco Incorporated out of Waymark, Pennsylvania.
Item one is $212,128.89. And item two is $12,500. Let's make sure these go, do those, you don't go with the other one, that we just did.
This is from Bob Miller Construction out of Nicholson, Pennsylvania.
$254,540 even. Item two is $20,000.
I don't say this right. Stravasky Paving Company out of Archibald, Pennsylvania.
Item two is $9,000. That's a little short, huh?
Maybe they can get you a nice letter opener, you know?
I'm fine, I'll have one.
This is Skill Kill Paving Company, Skill Kill Haven, PA.
$265,000 even. Item two is $22,500.
Glenn O. Hawbaker Incorporated, Millen, PA.
Item two is $17,000.
This is from Broome, the Timinus product.
By Timinus.
On Timinus, best on New York.
$168,900. And item two is $13,750.
American Asphalt, Shaver Town, PA.
Item one, $191,322.50. Item two, $60,000. Last one.
Jenny Rao Excavating, Montrose, PA.
Item one, $286,350. Item two, $5,000. They'll go to the solicitor and the engineer for review and award.
Quick question. The bids have both a, a item one and an item two part, could you describe a little bit about the project?
Yeah, there's, of course, with any project, there's unknowns, part two is for additional materials and stuff. Part one is, of course, milling down the entire recycling plant, fixing some grade work, and adding some more base, and then top coating everything. And actually grinds it all the way down, takes all the base out, until you put base back in and top coat.
Yes.
Just to be clear, you guys will take the lowest bid, of course, but this is in review of the solicitor and the engineer, because there's such a difference in prices that we're seeing here, I'm assuming that once that gets looked over by the engineer, if it's found that the lowest price is not going to be acceptable, you'll come back to the table with another one?
It'll go, we'll be announcing at the next meeting who it was awarded to, the solicitor and the engineer will review it, to make sure that qualifications are met, to make sure that everything is in order with the proposals, and then it will go to the lowest responsible bidder.
Yes, Vera?
How big of an area is this? This is the whole plant?
The whole recycling area.
And in front of it also?
Yes.
Do you know the dimensions of that whole plant?
No, I do not.
You have such a disparity in prices, you know, it goes.
Well, that's a good thing. More people bid, the more disparity, the better for us.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for coming, thank you for your bid. All right, we're on number 29 now.
Motion to approve 29.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to exonerate Susquehanna County tax collectors from collecting the county 2019 delinquent return, county returns in the amount of $474,8693, per the recommendation of Treasurer Jason Miller, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. Are there any questions or comments?
Is that one of the highest amounts that's been exonerated? It seems kind of high.
No.
No.
It's kind of a normal amount for the year?
It's average.
It's average.
Average?
All in favor?
Aye. Motion to approve 30.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to approve the following tax claim bureau exoneration request, Brooklyn Township, parcel 183.00-1,012.01, and the name of Brooklyn Township is Brooklyn Township is a tax-exempt entity. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Does that mean all townships are tax-exempt? What does that mean, tax-exempt entity? Does that mean every township is tax-exempt?
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Number 31.
Motion to approve 31.
I will second that motion.
I got a motion by Commissioner Hall to adopt resolution 2020-01 to extend the terms of exemptions, deductions, abatements, and credits under KOEZ or KOIZ between Susquehanna County and Gray Forces Industries, effective January 1, 2021, through December 31, 2030. Questions or comments? Yes, Bruce?
Could you please explain what KOEZ stands for and KO?
We've got it right on the back, we printed it out, it's in your packet there.
Can you explain it?
The Keystone Opportunity Improvement Zone, Economic Opportunities Stimulating Industrial, Commercial, and Residential Improvements for Physical and Infrastructure Deterioration with the Air Susquehanna County Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Motion to point 32.
I will second that motion.
I got a motion by Commissioner Hall to appoint Roy Williams, Susquehanna Depo, to the Susquehanna County Economic Development Board to fill the term vacated by Margaret Beeger, effective January 12, 2020, through December 31, 2020, per the recommendation of Commissioners. Questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thirty-three.
Motion to approve thirty-three.
I will second that motion.
A motion by Commissioner Hall to approve the proclamation twenty-twenty dash oh-one declaring February as American Heart Month. Seconded by Commissioner Herschel. Questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. You say aye, yep.
Motion to approve thirty-four.
I will second that motion.
And a motion by Commissioner Hall to ratify and prove the collective bargaining agreement between the county of Susquehanna and Teamsters Local Two-Two-Nine, covering its professional employees and the office of children and youth. Seconded by Commissioner Herschel. Questions or comments? All in favor? Oh, sorry.
Are there any major changes in this contract?
You can get a copy of the contract after. Health insurance, they are paying more for their health insurance.
A lot of language change.
Language change.
A lot of language change.
Okay. Can I have a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, public comment.
I have a public comment. Good morning. My name is Michael Valesky. I'm Vice President, Business Agent with Teamsters Local Two-Two-Nine, out of Dunmore, Pennsylvania. I'd like to address January twenty-second comment that Commissioner Hall made. On January twenty-second, twenty-twenty, and I called Mr. Hall, said the union was contacted over the wage study, and it sat down, and the union refused to meet with the county. That is not true. Mr. Hall, could you explain to me why you said that? When you know...
Because I called you and said, let's get together. We got the comments.
The first time we talked about this, Mr. Hall, was December eighteenth of twenty-nineteen, when we were over in the meeting room over here, and you told me that there was four groups making less than the wage study suggested, and we cost the county around five hundred and fifty thousand dollars to bring them up, and that the county could not do it all at once, too costly for the county. And we would discuss it more, once we get into negotiations with the four contracts we have due in twenty-twenty.
That's not what was said.
That's exactly what was said.
Well, that's your opinion. You're entitled to your opinion.
I'm always entitled to my opinion. And then on February seventh was the second time we talked about it, which was last Friday, right outside the Sheriff's Department, when I was pulling down an interest list for being, having them steward up here. At that point, we scheduled a meeting for next, for this Friday.
That's true.
So that's only two times that we've talked about it.
We've talked more than that.
No, we have not. I can bring phone records, Mr. Hall. The only time you ever called my office was December, I'm sorry, January tenth.
Well, we talked during the negotiations, too, on the contract.
I have our attorney here during negotiations of the contract.
No, it wasn't during that, so, again, you're entitled to your...
We're on interest arbitration. Also, it was brought to my attention that you're telling people up here that it's the union that's holding back the wages. How could the union hold back the wages when we're in a contractual obligation that the county gives so much?
Again, as I said, I wanted to sit down and talk to you about the wage salary adjustments, and you're the, I'm waiting for you to set the meeting. And we talked last Friday, and then we set the meeting. So now we're gonna have a meeting.
I'm sure you don't say that you, you had no control over the union.
Right.
You answered me a couple of weeks ago, that response. Is that true?
I have no control over them.
And you have no negotiating? That's what you indicated.
I, what I said was, there has been no negotiations, right? Except for the contracts we negotiated.
We were up here January fifteenth, and it was brought to my attention that during the, or, with the arbitration on January fifteenth for the interest arbitration or probation, after that, it was brought to my attention that you're telling members up here that I will not talk to you about that. At that point, why didn't you bring it up on January fifteenth in front of your attorney? I've talked to Scott Blissman multiple times, emailed him multiple times. There has been no discussion of us meeting for the...
Well, I have talked to you about it, Mike, and again, if you want to say that we haven't talked about it, that's fine.
Yes.
You know, well, we're all done talking about it. I'm sorry you feel that way. But, you know, Friday, we have a discussion. I guess this is the way you want to start it out, and kind of...
Well, I don't like you even calling liar here.
Well, I didn't...
You're saying that we, we're not around the area? We're in Dunmore, Mr. Hall, it's both.
Well, you know, I can document several times that our office has called your office and sent emails, and it takes weeks to get back.
Please, show me the documents. Show me your phone records.
We're all done.
I make a suggestion that we...
Don't make a suggestion.
Okay.
Just move on.
Move on, thank you.
My name is Craig Pollack, Secretary Treasurer of Local Two-Two-Nine. And I just want to be clear, we have not refused to bargain with this county over anything. Anything. There's been no refusal on our part.
I don't think anybody said you refused.
If you were to present, you're claiming that you, you've been in touch with our office numerous times, we welcome any documentation you have to prove that point. But I just want it on record publicly here, we have never once refused to bargain over any contract in this county. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. We missed one thing that was on the agenda, where we need to add to the agenda, and that's about the burn ban, the upcoming burn ban. So I make a motion to add it to the agenda, resolution twenty-twenty dash zero-two about a burn ban that will be coming into effect.
It's on the last page of the packet.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I will second that motion.
Questions or comments?
When will it come into effect?
It's, it's here in your packet.
March fourteenth through April twelfth.
There you go. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any other public comment? Colleen?
I guess there's more, a little comment, after the answers about the fourteen ninety-six or fourteen ninety-five, and I work, one was a transfer which was less money than what was the new hires, and then later in the document, we have another one that was a transfer that is higher. So maybe just have you guys have a look back over and see, make, I guess my comment is, let's make sure that the county employees that have been here the longer, the longest are the ones that are getting the penny increase.
Depends on your start date, and depends on when the transfer was, and that'll dictate what their, what their raise is, or what their increase is.
Susan?
I'm a supervisor in Oakland Township, and I'm concerned about what you're doing to ensure the integrity of the elections in the primary and the general election, to improve the past. Thank you.
Sandy, did you have a question earlier?
It was about the burn ban, and you answered it, so I'm good.
Okay, awesome. Yes, comments?
I'm sorry, it's just, Commissioner Hall has said two, three, and four on the salary board was union positions, and I guess I question that because these, some of these say no benefits. Generally, we're looking at union positions with benefits.
Now, we have union positions that don't have benefits, too.
Thank you. Was my question answered? About the integrity of the elections, what we're doing? We had a township meeting last night, and I was told there will be no paper ballots. Why is that? And what are you doing to improve the integrity?
Well, we're going to machines, for one thing, and we're gonna go into an election board meeting next, so then we can address it here. Yes, all right. Yes.
So there are, even if you request a paper ballot, you cannot do that?
It's a provisional ballot.
No. So, at the election polling places, there'll only be the machines, and you'll be voting on the machines. Everybody will receive training like we did in the past for the election workers on how to use the machines, to make sure everything's okay. There'll be additional staff at each polling place to help the judge of elections. There will take and be provisional ballots for people that come in that are not, that don't fall into the voting category, that being able to allow to vote. And of course, there's always the mail-in ballot, people can vote by mail-in also.
So you can't have just both, like a machine and paper?
No.
That doesn't exist?
No.
Doesn't that machine give a receipt type thing?
The machine prints out the ballot. Machine prints out the ballot, ballot goes in the box.
There you go. And if there's an error? It can be...
There's no error. I mean, it's gonna ask you, is this how you want to vote? And you're gonna say yes or no. You say yes, and that's how you vote.
I just see how it went for Iowa.
There's no paper trail.
If you notice...
Well, we're not, I will...
Hide it home.
And the machines don't store the votes?
They don't store anything.
Thank you.
So they print it out on site?
Yes. Print it out right there.
You got me to take home with me?
No.
Why not?
You don't take the paper ballot home with you now, do you?
Well, I know, but this is a different situation.
You don't take ballots home.
Yeah, there's no paper trail at all?
There's a paper trail. It prints out a paper ballot, and it goes into the election box.
So, in other words, there's a way to count paper ballots if there's a challenge?
Yes.
Yes.
There is a paper trail there.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah.
My question is, are we going, as, as members of the polling election place board, are we going to get full training from start to finish? Because we already know how to work the machines. The question is, last election, the machines went out of the courthouse without half of the things that needed. One of them was the pole head, was in airplane mode, so we waited for a long time to get that repaired. We came out without extension cords, we couldn't plug them in. We had a, I sent my husband home to get an extension cord to plug in the voting machine. I mean, so that's the first thing. And, and the second thing is, we need to have more than just the, the judge of elections, the minority inspector, and two clerks. If we're gonna be strictly on machines, judge of elections cannot help out anybody at those machines, but we need people who are auxiliary and are trained and are in our district. And that should be worked on now, instead of finding out three days before the election that I've got no clerks, and that we have no backup. And somebody should go through every single one of those machines to make sure, before they leave, that they actually work.
So, to respond to that, the machines themselves are getting calibrated and tested far enough in advance so that we know that we don't have a problem. The second thing that's happening that starts next week is our maintenance department will be calling and meeting with all the judges of elections, going to the sites, measuring to make sure that we have extension cords, make sure that outlets are working properly. We've had some places where they plugged an extension cord in, the outlet was dead, so they have outlet testers to make sure everything is working. Maintenance will work with the judge of elections to make sure everything is documented as to what they need. They'll come back, all that will get put in place. The office is currently working on getting additional staff for each polling place to work for the judge of elections, to take care of issues and problems if people have problems. So, everything that you've mentioned is being worked on today and is being done. Actually, we've just finished up this week collecting all the old units out of the polling places, and they've started delivering the new booths that go in there, so that they can start meeting with the judge of elections next week and start getting that done.
So I'm assuming that we have a judge of election for Forest Lake?
My understanding is we do, and I'll double-check that after the meeting. Motion, Bruce?
I want to ask about the roads also. I drove on seven oh-six and eighty-one a couple of days ago at night, and it's really difficult to see potholes at night. Seven oh-six is getting worse and worse east of Montrose. What's being done so that we don't have to wait till the spring, the summer?
Well, that's gonna be worked on in April and May. We met with PennDOT yesterday, we had a meeting, and they have a great big board on the wall, and they have everything scheduled. They have it all planned out, their plan laid out, and they went over which roads they're gonna be working on in that particular stretch there out here. You're talking out by tractor supply?
Yes.
That's scheduled for April, May. Is it April, May?
April.
Right. The thing is, why do they get to this place so bad that we have to then dodge the potholes or hit the potholes, damage our cars, when we supposedly have millions and billions in royalties in this county? Can you use any impact money for those roads so they can keep up? And are you getting more money from the state, as you requested months ago, to help with these roads?
Yes, we did get about two hundred thousand dollars more into this county from the Secretary of Transportation before she left, which has come into this county to help with the, with the roads.
And what's two hundred thousand? Isn't it like, isn't that like a drop in the bucket?
Well, not, not necessarily a drop in the bucket. You can buy a lot of material for two hundred thousand dollars. So, but at this point, I would tell you that, you know, if you have a lot of concerns with people, you should be talking to the people that are responsible for the state roads, which is your state legislators and PennDOT.
Yes, I have talked to them, and the situation just continues. You have lousy roads every year.
Okay, but the county commissioners have no control over the state legislators or PennDOT. I don't know why you guys can't understand that.
I do understand.
Then, okay, then why do we keep going round and round on this?
We have to make it public so people can hear this, and more people can call their legislators.
I have put it all over Facebook. If you have a problem with the roads, call your state legislators, call PennDOT.
And then what do we have? A new secretary of transportation, is that what you're saying?
An acting secretary right now.
So we can call that one, too?
Absolutely.
And do you have a phone number off the top of your...
I've had them on Facebook several times. I'll post them again.
Okay, it's on Facebook so people can see it. The other thing I want to mention, too, is that Williams Pond Road had a whole bunch of fracking going on the past several weeks. The roads were in bad shape, and then they got fixed. Also, now I'm hearing that people have water problems, and their water has turned brown some of them, and bad odors. What can we do for these people that we should know about and not just give it to the DEP and to Cabot Oil and Gas? That they should be helped even with the impact money, with their water issues, maybe with testing or with water deliveries, or, and also to make known to the population who they are. Because if I live on Williams Pond Road, I want to know who's, who's contaminated. I don't want to just hear about it like, like a rumor or something. We should be told what's happening. Right now, the industry keeps doing non-disclosures, silencing people, also have attorneys assigned to these...
Vera, Vera.
They're all silencing them.
Vera, stop, please.
The whole county is being silenced.
Vera, stop. We've been through this how many times?
I don't care.
Several times. You're here every year, and we go through this. All your issues and concerns are state and federal issues. They're not county issues. Go to the agencies that are responsible, hold the people that are responsible for those positions responsible. That's what you need to do.
We've been doing that, and they do nothing.
Then maybe you need to get different...
I want them to know.
Not later, maybe you need to get different people elected, then.
Well, we're trying that, too.
All right.
All right.
At the county level, so... And then also, I have a comment about assessment. I read the paper that assessment...
Your three minutes is up, Colleen. Did you have another question?
And there should not be a limit between questions and three minutes. This is a public meeting.
Shut her down.
We have full access.
Colleen.
I hate, I hate to do this, but I, in a sense, I agree with her. I know a lot of this is state issue, but when we're looking at county people, they have brown water, if this is true, and I don't know, I haven't heard any of this. I think that she may have a point, that maybe there is something that we might be able to do with the impact fees to help them get water.
Absolutely not.
This is to them and the gasoline.
We do not have the responsibility or the authority to do anything about it. You can't just go into somebody else's business and take over their business. It's their responsibility to take care of this, not us. We can contact them like we always do. We've just had meetings with D, with PennDOT. We had meetings with the legislators about the roads and everything else, and we do that. But we do not have control over these agencies, and we cannot interject in the middle of those agencies.
Well, I understand that, but when people don't have water...
Okay, again, I mean, I don't know how many different ways I can say it. We don't have the authority or the ability to go into other people's businesses and organizations and overtake what they're supposed to be doing.
Commissioner, it's true, you don't have the authority to take things over, but it's also true that you have the political ability to be a leadership party, to advocate on behalf of people who have a problem before the state agencies.
Okay, and again...
So that's not just the responsibility of the individual citizen, but it has the authority of, and weight of the county government, which makes a bigger impact before the state, whether it's an administrative body or a legislative body, than if just Joe Doakes, common citizen, shows up. You know that.
Well, again, if you only hear what you want to hear, what I said was, we do advocate. We meet with all these agencies. We do advocate for the people. So, to respond to your comment, I did say that. We do meet. We've met with, with PennDOT. We've met with the legislators. I've met with DEP. We are advocating for the people in this county. But as far as going in and taking over, we can't do that.
Commissioner, you've said two different things. You've said that it's not my responsibility, and now you've turned around and said that you do advocate.
Well, I said it's not a...
Which is your response?
Well, my response is, it's not our responsibility, but we still do advocate, like I've said. Now, listen, I realize you're all here to poke at me, and that's what we're doing nowadays, Now, listen, I realize you're all here to poke at me, and that's what we're doing nowadays, is just trying to poke at the commissioners.
That's, that's not true.
Yeah, that is true. So, you know, I've told you what's going on. I've told you that we meet with the agencies. I told you it's not our responsibility, but we still do advocate, and we do what we can.
Commissioner, I'd like to point out that we treat you with respect, and perhaps if you would lower your tone and treat us with respect.
Well, I do treat you with respect, but this is how I speak.
And you don't have to take it personal. You don't have to take it personally.
I'm not taking it personally. But when you come, Vera, at the same thing every other meeting you come to, and you stab about the same issue over and over again, then it's a problem.
Why do you feel stabbed? You're taking it personal, and just be relaxed about it and listen to your constituents.
I am listening to my constituents.
I'd like to revisit something that was spoken about a little while ago by this gentleman in front of me, about this, about a paper trail. We did have a paper trail. We had the bottom of the, of the ballot. I know this is beyond any of the commissioners, but I, things tend to go wrong when they get stored in machines, people who go through stuff can... I'm talking about the elections. Talking about everything that's electronic, and there's no trail except of what's in that machine. You can't do anything about it, but I just, I just, you know, no, it couldn't happen here. It happened in Florida. It happened in Georgia. It happened all over.
I understand. Thank you, Bruce, for your comment. Can I get a motion to close this commissioner's meeting?
Motion closed.
I'll second that motion.
Commissioner's meeting is closed at nine fifty-five AM. Thank you for coming. We do have an election board meeting.
We're starting about five minutes.
It'll start in about five minutes.